Myself and Kristen and Ken. And then for the county school board delegate and alternate, first one with Ken, do you want to continue in that role?
Nobody else wants to.
Yeah. I'll get some of those stuff. Well, I was gonna ask Kristen if she wants it. So there's like a county school board and you're basically like our representative. I don't think it meets all that often, does it?
There are one.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Probably the main thing would be when it comes time for those countywide meetings that we hosted this past fall, maybe to kind of plan those, kind of bring topics to that committee. How often do you meet?
We meet, there is definitely one. It's an organizational meeting, just like we had tonight. Yeah, it's the county, they reorganized the president. We're reviewing the survey. Okay. I felt bad because the way the committee structure goes, you only got a lucky committee for the moment until we decide what we're gonna do with them. So I wanted to make sure there was a second spot, so. Okay. Then that will be our structure for right now.
It is good to have a alternate for that committee as well.
Well, a seasoned veteran. Perhaps Mr. Guza would be our alternate.
Yeah, you're funny.
Yeah, alright, thank you. Okay, so that's how we'll proceed from tonight. And they've made some discussions about doing things later differently going forward. So let's move on to finance tonight.
That's true.
I make a motion to pay the invoices of the general fund in the amount of $153,926.81.
A motion's been made to approve the general fund invoices. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Nick. Discussion.
I do. I see that we, my understanding is in the past, we've not necessarily been invoiced for our school nurse. And I see that this time we were invoiced in the amount of $8,230. And I'm assuming that's for like a salary or compensation back to the hospital for that.
As Melody and I have shared before, at least every year, we have a budget item. It's a meeting that I typically have with representatives at the hospital. Most years not been filled. This year we have it.
Yeah, which is completely fine. Can you just tell me, what do we get for that? How often? We have one nurse, is that correct?
We have a nurse that comes, no, correct. Comes four days a week for half.
Half days.
Half days. And it is a position that we share partnership with a neighboring school, with Ugly Schools. So that nurse, if she's not here, you know, her other part of the day is at Ugly. But that, the schedule is not always for sure set in stone. There's some flexibility there. If there's a need, we, I can't think of a good example, but.
See for classes.
So that's, you know, so we definitely get, it's definitely a valuable thing to have with for our district.
Other questions? Okay, well, we've had a motion that's been seconded, so we proceed to a vote. A motion to approve the general fund invoices. Starting with Kristen.
Yes.
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 Yes?
Yes.
Alright, that motion passes. Food service bills.
I make a motion to pay the food service invoices on the food service account in the amount of $22,293.22.
We've had a motion paying food services invoices. Is there a second? Are you seconded? Questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none and hearing none, we'll proceed to a vote on a motion to approve the food service bills. Kristen?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
And that is approved as well. Superintendent evaluation.
Sure. In front of you, when you came tonight, is several different documents. And I guess since we are an educational institution, we're kinda afraid you guys got some homework this next one. What you have there is the MASB superintendent evaluation form. It is MASB, that is the evaluation tool we have used in very, in recent years. You also have, you have one blank copy, so you can write your own notes and whatnot. You also have a copy that, a self-evaluation that I have completed. In addition to that is an attachment of kind of the evidence articles that, that kind of is reflective, of the artifacts that are reflective of my self-evaluation. So over the next month, if questions on it as far as, I mean, as far as clarification on the evaluation tool itself, I'll hesitate. And if you don't want to ask me, I can, maybe you're not sure how I can get in touch with MASB as well. But then the idea is next month, we'll come back and the process that we used in the past, I have a little, I'll probably ask them to close session, we'll have our discussion, and we'll come over there after.
You're saying plan a long meeting, is what you're saying?
Doesn't have to be.
But yes.
Any questions related to the superintendent evaluation? Okay. We reached the end of the agenda for tonight, so unless there's other business.
I have one thing. I would ask Greg to put our, we usually have a five-year plan, but next meeting we can have an update. Maybe make it for three instead of five.
Is this like a strategic plan?
Yes.
Or are you referring to them?
Yes. And Mr. Newland can explain if I agree with him. Plus. Any other questions? Okay, then take the motion to adjourn.
Salute.
To adjourn.
I am my religion is to defy the United States of America and to rule the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Have everyone, mark every word. The president. We are more than happy to provide musical entertainment for in the background for you tonight, so afterwards, if you want to kind of go take a listen, the performances are down the hall, but see the kids that have been working hard over the last few months. First order of business is the election of officers for the year 2020. How this procedure per process will go, this floor will be opened up for nominations. And then once all nominations that have been brought to the floor, we'll then have a vote, vote of the members here to in support of whatever motion has been made. So having said that, once, we will start first with the president. Once that's done, the president then will take over for the rest and lead the rest of the meeting. So this is my one moment of the year I can view this. With that, open up to, open up the floor to the board for nominations for, for the officer of president. I nominate Ken Guza. Nomination for Ken.
I nominate.
Yep.
I nominate Zach Esco.
So we have nomination for Ken, nomination for Esco. Are there any other nominations? At this time, we'll do a roll call vote, and you will be voting in support of the nomination, or support of the motion that has been included on the floor. So with that, we'll start with Kristen. Or are there any, I'm sorry. Well, are we nominating, or you're seconding the nom, the.
Which nomination?
Correct. So you're both gonna be Mr. Esco or Mr. Newland?
I'll say I vote.
Yes.
I'll, I vote for Zach.
Ken.
Zach.
Zach.
Ken.
Zach. I guess we'll have your support for Mr. Esco as president. Now we will do a roll call vote for support of that motion that's been seconded. Kristen?
Sorry, just.
Now, now you're.
Yes or no?
Yes or no?
For Zach, correct?
For Mr. Esco, yes.
Oh, yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Motion is carried. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Esco.
Okay. So we'll open the floor up then for a nomination for vice president.
I nominate Jim Hass.
Other nominations? Okay, this time we will vote on that. It's four votes to proceed, so Kristen.
I vote yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Motion is carried. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Esco.
Okay. So we'll open the floor up then for a nomination for vice president.
I nominate Jim Hass.
Other nominations? Okay, this time we will vote on that. It's four votes to proceed, so Kristen.
I vote yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. And then technically, it needs an actual vote of the board. That was, that was to get him to the final vote, so now you actually have to vote in favor of his nomination as vice president. So back to you, Kristen.
I vote yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so that's it. Alright, thank you. Nomination for secretary.
I nominate Kristen Reimberg.
Other nominations? I'll nominate Ken Guza. At this time, so will you vote for either Kristen or Ken? We'll start with Kristen.
Oh, I vote for Ken.
Right?
Kristen.
Ken.
I vote for Ken. Kristen.
Ken.
Okay. Ken has it. Except that we now move to a final vote on Ken of all members. So start you back, Kristen.
Yes.
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 And then technically, it needs an actual vote of the board. That was, that was to get him to the final vote, so now you actually have to vote in favor of his nomination as vice president. So back to you, Kristen.
I vote yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so that's it. Alright, thank you. Nomination for secretary.
I nominate Kristen Reimberg.
Other nominations? I'll nominate Ken Guza. At this time, so will you vote for either Kristen or Ken? We'll start with Kristen.
Oh, I vote for Ken.
Right?
Kristen.
Kristen.
Ken.
I vote for Ken. Kristen.
Ken.
Okay. Ken has it. Except that we now move to a final vote on Ken of all members. So start you back, Kristen.
Yes.
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 And Ken Hassett. And treasurer.
I nominate Denise.
Denise has been nominated. Other nominations?
I nominate Nick.
Nick has been nominated. Any other nominations? Okay, so at this time, we'll be voting for either Nick or Denise. Start with Kristen.
Oh, Nick.
Okay.
Denise.
Nick.
It's kind of.
Denise.
Um, Denise, I don't know.
Denise.
Nick. Denise.
Alright, so now we'll proceed to a final vote on Denise, starting with Kristen.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes. Alright, president. This time, we will take a look at the minutes from the last meeting. If anybody has had a chance to review them, open it up for anybody if you have any corrections to the minutes. Otherwise, we'll open it up to a motion to accept the minutes. Motion to accept? Motion to accept by Nick. Second by Kristen. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. And the opposed? Okay. Now we'll move on to communications and presentations. Mr. Newland?
Yes. First thing in your packet is the, this year's nomination form for the 2020 Distinguished Alumni Award. This is the time of year we start, kind of, even though we collect them throughout the year, we, we kind of make a final push to get all nominations turned in. This year, the deadline is going to be February 21st. And so, so we encourage, encourage, I encourage the board or the public, if you know of someone that is alumni of, of our, of our great district, nominate them. I think sometimes there's a lot of discussion that, oh, so-and-so would be so good, you don't need to be recognized, you just need someone to put on paper and turn it into a nominee. So those, those nominations are accepted in the board office, and, and like we have been since the very beginning, we will recognize those individuals at this year's graduation ceremony. So what I have for student alumni.
Greg, can you confirm the deadline? The paper says the February 15th. Is it the 23rd?
Yeah, it is the 21st.
It is the 21st.
Yes.
Thank you.
When I realized how that fell, we, the nomination that we have on our webpage is an updated one. We traditionally use the 15th, but the way that followed this year, the committee asked to move it.
Okay, and so, or appreciation.
We have some in, fine individuals from our student council. I'll let them kind of introduce themselves, and I thank them for being, for being here as well.
I am Amanda Lujit, I'm the president. This is Pre-Analyseous Logistics Vice President, and this is Vice Strategic Secretary. And this is Mrs. Roth Guza, and Mrs. Hanzinger, they're our co-advisors. And we would just like to thank the board for everything you guys do for us and for the school, and show how much we appreciate all.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yes, in the blue, in the blue bag is.
Thank you.
Make your hand up.
Anything else under board? Appreciation, Mark. Thanks, though, maybe we continue it?
Well, that's supposed to be music.
So that concludes till next January. At this time, we have public comment, so we'll open it up to anybody who would like to address the board. Okay, seeing none, we will continue on to personnel. Mr. Newland?
We have Mr. Bogan, I believe I saw him sneak in. So. But based on Mr. Bogan's recommendation, and as, and I support those recommendations, we have a couple of positions here to, to, that we want to get approved, so if approved, that those individuals can move forward with getting this, getting things going that they need to do with their upcoming season. So first would be a recommendation to, for the varsity football position, and we have the recommendation of Mr. Cal Polkley. Mr. Polkley has been part of the football staff in recent years, leading the, basically been the junior varsity head coach of the most recent season. We, during the interview process, we had a couple, a couple candidates that I felt strong about, but, but it, you know, Mr. Polkley just has shown, shown a way to not only teach the game, but also to get the students, or the student athletes, encourage them and recruit and, because you, you guys know, we've talked in the past, sometimes it's hard to get, get, get the students out. But with that, I would recommend Mr. Polkley as our head varsity football coach.
So there's been a recommendation for Cal Polkley as the varsity head football coach. Is there a motion in support of that?
I heard.
Second with the second. Any discussion on that? Are you sure? Okay. You are aware it's not gonna be an easy road.
Not with Mr. Bogan's old, yeah. Cat and Ryan, sure, the rainbows, smiley faces.
Any other comments? Alright, so at this time, we proceed to a vote on that. I'll start with a vote is for the motion to accept the recommendation to hire Cal Polkley as varsity football coach. Kristen?
Yes.
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 Yes. That passes. Congratulations, Mr. Polkley.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, board. I know we're excited to get going, so I appreciate that, and hopefully, excuse me, hopefully, I know we lost a good, good chunk of coaches on the program, but we feel good on numbers right now. We'll be good for JV and varsity, and we hope that's gonna be the way to come. So hope to see you at games, Harbor Beach, first one, and we'll at least have 11 hard working boys out there.
Probably the best students of the night is you can now start like meeting kids. Well, congrats, Cal, and wish you the best of luck out.
Thank you very much. Again, thank you, board.
Second nominate, or nomination, sorry. Second recommendation, that is, is the position for the girls' varsity soccer coach. And at this time, I would nominate Mr. Matt Varner. Mr. Varner's been, also, as you know, has been an assistant with the girls' team, as well as an assistant on the boys' side of it as well. And, you know, Mr. Bogan and I feel that'd be a nice transition from Mr. Sutherland, and with Mr. Varner taking over, feel like it will be a, a little seamless as a transition as you can have among the coaching staff, so.
So a recommendation has been made, and at this time, is there a motion to accept the recommendation as of Matt Varner as girls' head soccer coach? Nick has made the motion. I'm gonna second it. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, we'll vote on that. Kristen?
Can I just say another thing next time? Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, that passes. Congratulations, Mr. Varner.
Were we answering good questions? And the third recommendation for tonight is that of varsity golf coach. And something a little different, but not, not something that we have not done before in the past, but, and that is to have two co-coaches, and that is Coach Sutherland, the other, I get the, the, how about wiser Mr. Sutherland? As Mike Sutherland, and as, and Bill McAlpin. And again, very knowledgeable in the game. Either they could teach me a thing or two, but, so we haven't said that point yet, we might add, and. They're just, I think the other co-coach is just because of schedule conflicts, and they said that, you know, if somebody couldn't cover, somebody else would cover for them, and it's kind of the reason why we want two people there, just in case there's, there's a conflict with the schedule.
So a recommendation has been made for Mike Sutherland and Bill McAlpin as co-head golf coaches. At this time, is there a motion in support of that? Saw Jim's hand first. Second. Second by Denise. And I guess, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think the bylaws actually require us to start down there, so unless one takes a vote, just, just we'll, we'll go the opposite way. So is there any discussion first, though? So then, start with Jim.
Yes.
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 And they're passes, so. Congratulations to Mr. Sutherland and Mr. McAlpin. At this time, there are some other personnel matters.
Yes, in your packet, start with a letter that says, Dear Mrs. Brighton, I am informing you that my last day employment with public, at public schools will be January 17th of 2020, and is signed, Ms. Stacy, Stacy Lynch. Ms. Lynch has been, sort of as a paraprofessional, but her personal race, her family have moved out of the area, and therefore is unable to do employment at the district. So we wish her the best of luck, and I would recommend with, that the acceptance of her resignation with regret.
Your recommendation has been made to accept the resignation with regret. Is there a motion to approve that? Kristen has made the motion second. Nick seconded it. Second. Any discussion? Alright, so we proceed to vote. Motion to accept the resignation, Kristen?
Yes.
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 Also in your packet, is a letter that says, Dear Mr. Bogan and, and Coach Kcheck, I'm writing this letter resignation with regret to inform you that I'll be resigning from the eighth grade volleyball coaching position. I've greatly enjoyed the years spent coaching volleyball, and I'm sad to remind, however, my son is on the high school soccer team, and unfortunately, their games are on the same nights as the junior high volleyball. I've missed too many, too many games the past few years, and don't want to miss anymore there, so. And that is signed, Mrs. Sherry, I'm sorry, Mrs. Sherry Howard-Greel. And again, she has been, been a great coach to have at the, at the junior high level, but obviously, raised the kids once, so. And I would also recommend the board accept the resignation with regret.
Recommendation has been made to accept the resignation of Sherry Howard-Greel with regret. Is there a motion in support of that? Are you making a motion? Second. Any discussion? I would like to say that I would look forward to Mrs. Howard-Greel rejoiting when she's able and willing, where she is, the people are willing. I know I was always kind of looking forward to my girls on her team, some type of teacher, so she's an excellent teacher, and from what I can tell, probably an excellent one. Are your kids still two years away at least from the program? Because it seems, it seems as soon as Bradley's done with high school.
Yeah, we've got a couple years, so.
Okay, because she says she's willing to come back, so I think we should hold her to her order.
Yes.
Any other discussion? Okay, at this time, we will proceed to a vote to accept the resignation with regret. Start with Kristen.
Yes.
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 Yes. Alright, any other personnel matters, Mr. Newland? Okay, so at this time, we are going to move on to move on stage lighting discussion. I'm gonna, maybe, let, let Mr. Delpier and then Mrs. Cizibah.
We also have Ken Woolzak from Metro Technologies here. As you know, Ken's been here before, has been working with us on, throughout the technology bond, various projects that we've done, so.
Yes. So to put it nicely, the award for this would include upgrade of the existing sound system at the stage cafeteria, like cafeteria stage, the existing lighting system at the stage and cafeteria, and adding a new ceiling mounted projector, and removing existing projection screen, putting a board rack string. Those are the three major scopes of the award. So any questions?
How many bids were submitted?
We only received one bid on this. It was the same contractor that submitted a quote prior to us bidding it out, or we just received a quote. It was over the bid threshold, so we went and advertised it, bid it out, and I sent it to a couple of bidders, it was advertised, but we did only get the one response.
Where's the breakdown of what actually everything's going to cost?
It's in their bid proposal, free terms, but that's, yeah, it's kind of, yeah.
Why wasn't it included?
It was included in their bid proposal, something like one, one contractor.
It's not in my packet.
Yeah, they do have the three different scopes, you know, told us.
Do you know off the top of your head, I, it does say in our packet that the award amount is 85,000. Do you know generally the breakdown into the, did you say the three big areas?
Um, yeah.
And while, while you look for that, actually.
Sure.
What is it that we're replacing? Like, how, how old is the stuff that's being replaced?
Original.
What's that?
Original.
It's original, okay, so.
So, in my notes, approximately the cost for the projector, projection screen is just over 30,000. And it's about 42,000 for the lighting portion, and approximately 6,000 for the sound system monitors.
Given that we only received the one bid, and your professional expertise, would you say that, that those amounts are about consistent with what you would expect to see in this case, then?
Yes.
Can you elaborate on the, the allowance for the scaffolding?
Scaffolding wasn't included in the request for.
And the third recommendation for tonight is that of varsity golf coach, and something a little different, but not, not something that we have not done before in the past, but, and as to the co, two co-coaches, and that is Coach Sutherland, the other, I get the, the, well, wiser Mr. Sutherland, and it's Mike Sutherland, that is, and Bill McAlpin. And they get very knowledgeable, they can teach me a thing or two, but, so we haven't said that, Mike, can we move on? I don't know. They're just, I think the other co-coach is just because of schedule conflicts, and they said that, you know, somebody couldn't cover, somebody else would cover for them, and it's not the reasoning why we want two people there, just in case there's, there's any conflict with the schedule.
So, a recommendation has been made for Mike Sutherland and Bill McAlpin as co-head golf coaches. At this time, is there a motion in support of that? Saw Jim Hesse first, second. Second by Denise. And I guess, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think the bylaws actually require us to start down there, so unless one takes a vote, just, we'll, we'll go the opposite way. So, is there any discussion first, though? So, then, start with Jim.
Yes.
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 And they're passes, so. Congratulations to Mr. Sutherland and Mr. McAlpin. At this time, there are some other personnel matters.
Yes, in your packet, start with a letter that says, Dear Mrs. Brighton, I am informing you that my last day of employment with public, at public schools will be January 17th of 2020, and it's signed, Ms. Stacy, Stacy Lynch. Mrs. Lynch has been served as a, as a paraprofessional, but her personal race, her and family have moved out of the area, and therefore is unable to do employment at the district. So, we wish her the best of luck, and I would recommend with, that the acceptance of her resignation with regret.
Your recommendation has been made to accept the resignation with regret. Is there a motion to approve that? Kristen has made the motion second. Nick seconded it. Second. Any discussion? All right, so we'll proceed to vote, motion to accept the resignation, Kristen?
Yes.
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 Also in your packet, is a letter that says, Dear Mr. Bogan and, and Coach Kcheck, I'm writing this letter of resignation with regret to inform you that I'll be resigning from the eighth grade volleyball coaching position. I've greatly enjoyed the years spent coaching volleyball, and I'm sad to resign. However, my son is on the high school soccer team, and unfortunately, their games are on the same nights as the junior high volleyball. I've missed too many, too many games the past few years, and don't want to miss anymore there, so. And that is signed, Mrs. Sherry, I'm sorry, Mrs. Sherry Howard-Gurriel. And again, she has been, been a great coach to have at, at the junior high level, but obviously, raised the kids once, so. And I would also recommend the board accept the resignation with regret.
Recommendation has been made to accept the resignation of Sherry Howard-Gurriel with regret. Is there a motion in support of that? Make a motion second. Second. Any discussion?
I would like to say that I would look forward to Mrs. Howard-Gurriel rejoining when she's able and willing, where she is capable of doing. I know I was always kind of looking forward to my girls on her team, some type of teacher, so she's an excellent teacher, and I can tell probably, an excellent one.
Are your bids still two years away at least from the program? Because it seems, it seems as soon as Bradley's done with high school.
Yeah, we've got a couple years, so hopefully.
Okay, because she says she's willing to come back, so I think we should hold her to her word, but.
Yes.
Any other discussion? Okay, this time, we will proceed to vote to accept the resignation with regret. Start Kristen?
Yes.
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 Yes. All right, any other personnel matters, Mr. Newlin? Okay. So, at this time, we are going to move on to the behind-the-scenes meeting discussion. I'm going to be led by Mr. Delpire and then Mrs. Kaseba.
We also have Ken Wozak from Metro Technologies here. As you know, Ken's been here before, has been working with us on, throughout the technology on various projects that we've done, so.
Is there any speaking?
Yes. So, to put in place something, the award for this would include upgrade of the existing sound system at the stage cafeteria, cafeteria stage, existing lighting system at the stage cafeteria, and adding a new ceiling mounted projector, and removing existing projection screen, putting a board rack string. Those are the three major scopes of the award. Is there any questions?
How many bids were submitted?
We only received one bid on this. It was the same contractor that submitted a quote prior to us bidding it out, or we didn't receive the quote. It was over the bid threshold, so we went and advertised it, bid it out, and I sent it to a couple of bidders, it was advertised, but we did only get the one response.
Where's the breakdown, like actually everything's going to cost?
It's in their bid proposal, free terms apply that, yeah, it's kind of that, yeah.
Why wasn't it included?
It was included in the very big proposal, in one, one account.
It's not in my packet.
Yeah, they do have the three different scopes, total.
Do you know off the top of your head, I mean, it does say in our packet that the award amount is 85,000. Do you know generally the breakdown into the, did you say the three big areas?
Um, yeah.
And while, while you look for that, actually.
Sure.
What is it that we're replacing? Like, how, how old is the stuff that's being replaced?
Original.
What's that?
Original.
It's original, okay, so.
So, in my notes, approximately the cost for the projector, projection screen is just over 30,000. And it's about 42,000 for the lighting portion, and approximately 6,000 for the sound system components.
Given that we only received the one bid, and your professional expertise, would you say that, that those amounts are about consistent with what you would expect to see in this case, then?
Yes.
Can you elaborate on the, the allowance for the scaffolding?
Scaffolding wasn't included in the request for proposal, so generally, posted their view, they mentioned that they privately scaffolding, and the cost wasn't included in the bid. There is a lift, which the district has a lift that they can use, so we had an allowance in, and whatever is remaining of that allowance will come back at the end of contract, any unused portion. So, that allowance is used at the discretion of the district for scaffolding, and then anything else comes out, but any remainder will come back at the end of contract.
So, if I'm understanding correctly, like the scaffolding would, they would break their own scaffolding to do?
Yeah, the, the cost would be for them to procure it and install it.
They don't have scaffolding?
Pardon?
They don't have, like, they have to buy scaffolding?
No, usually it's rented for the separate items.
Oh, okay.
So, the cost would be rented.
Okay. And then, what do you think the, like, expectancy of this new project would be?
The projector, there, there's no bulb, it's actually, it's a projector, so much longer than a projector running, or maintenance for, for branding, a board rack projection screen, I've seen that for a pretty long time. The lighting, how long has lighting and sound been in their name? It's a ridge. So, it's, that's, yeah.
Twenty some.
Twenty some years for, for lighting and sound for your.
Twenty seven.
Yeah.
And I think if you, if you ask, not, not to encourage you to ask, but if you ask Mrs. Kaseba or Mrs. Hofkirk, they would tell you, last few years, you know, that they've had some very, very good support in trying to, you know, kind of, kind of keep, keep the lighting going, and I think most of you are, you know, the, the last performance last year, kind of a delay based on part of, part of what we're replacing being no longer useful.
Okay.
This, sorry, this comes out of the gun, the top line?
Correct.
And we still definitely have opportunity for more questions, we're just going to do it in order of, there's been a recommendation to accept a proposal for Metro Technology Services for 85,270 dollars and 36 cents. At this time, is there a motion to approve that? So, move back, Ken? Second by Maria? Okay, now we're back open for discussion. More questions? Comments? Discussion?
What is the timeframe of the installation?
So, I'd really say it's needed pretty urgently for upcoming events, so upon your approval this evening, I would get a contract wrapped up tomorrow, and we would get everything ordered right away.
About how long does it take them to assemble it?
Three to four, five days total for the install, so no more than a week. And we're kind of looking around, is it February 14th, president's week, but there's some time off here, so it's less than a month.
That's like a whole month before the, the spring. Other questions or comments or concerns or? Uh, we will, had a motion and seconded, so motion second to approve the contract for 85,270 dollars and 36 cents to Metro Technology Services, and we will start with Kristen?
Yes.
Okay. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Okay, so that passes. Okay, in your packets tonight, it looks like there is 2020 school board meeting dates.
Yep. What you have is, is the updated list corresponding to next year's calendar, or this, this calendar year, I should say. Do note a few of those days, like we've had in the past, where we may need to, where we would normally meet on that fourth Monday because of the holidays or things that, that fall on the calendar. But, and it goes through this time of year, next year, in January, when we have our prioritization. And like I do every year, the only, the only other option or, or topic or part of this I would bring past, if the board wants to reconsider, would simply be the time that we have the meetings, but in the past, kind of been, really no discussion, but it's all other than that.
Okay, well, we've got the school board, the proposed school board meeting dates and time for us, so let's start with, is there a motion to approve that proposed calendar? Okay, Nick had motion second. Maria with the second. Comments or questions or suggestions? Hearing none, we will proceed to vote on that then, to approve it as laid out before us, so Kristen?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay. Approved as laid out. Okay, next issue is committee appointments. So, I, I get to do that, I think, for the.
Per board policy, if the president appoints the positions each, each year, what you have in front of you is, is a list of the, those positions as they were most recently, and having a, I, I would bring this up today, considering, you know, what's had, taken place tonight, if it's something that, you know, that you want to review, you can bring back next time, but otherwise.
Nope, I think I'm, I think I'm ready to make some appointments, and if people want to talk about it later weekend, that's fine.
Before that, I would just like to put it out there, I would like to be removed from the policy committee, I've been on it for three years now, and with my background experience, I think I could be a considerable asset to the personnel and finance committee.
I know, Nick, that we had had a discussion once about the personnel finance committee can maybe broken up, and that's something that we can definitely look at. The bylaws actually call them one committee.
Yes.
So, for that, for tonight, we're going to have to appoint it that way, but I certainly know, at least, I'm, as one board member, I'm open to the idea of differentiating the committees, we just would have to do it via bylaw change and check. But, but tonight, at least initially, we have a wealth of, an embarrassment of riches in terms of experience and talents on the board, so given some of that experience, I think we'll start with personnel finance committee, with myself, Ken Guza, and Jim Hess, and building the grounds, very important committee for this year, Jim Hess, Nick Checkley, and Denise McVeigh. For curriculum, Maria, Denise, and let's put Nick there, and then policy.